From there we settle. Final export area on to perform more people for evidence at the time it all thing that the justice is in the way of the this.
Good evening, everybody. It is six oh five P M. This is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in reciting the pages.
I find the nature of the flying of the area on to perform more people for evidence at the time it all thing that the justice is in the way of the this.
Thank you very much. I'm Mr. President, including myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Loveenheim, Supervisor Michael Albert, Conservation Recreation Director Dr. Helis Jackson, Township Manager Julia Heilich, Solicitor Ron Karasek, and Engineer John Tressler. Announcements. There's a standing executive session this evening from five thirty P M to six P M regarding real property litigation in several suits, including the Vecchio suit and the back nine. Executive session with Middle Smithfield Township was held May thirtieth from eight forty-three A M to nine twelve A M regarding real property acquisition. And third, the resident vouchers for Danesbury Pool are available. So as you can see us here at the township starting tomorrow for the discounted rate. Okay, we have no minutes this evening, so we'll go right to the bills, which total two hundred forty thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty cents. Do I hear a motion on the bill worth to approve? Motion by Mr. Loveenheim. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Albert. Questions?
Yeah, I don't recognize the first three on the list there. The C L I S.
Um, C L I S and J and J Security Contracting are for the Marshalls Creek Fire Company grant that we got through C D D.
Oh, okay. We pay that as opposed to paying Marshalls Fire Company?
Right, because the grants in our name, Bonnie and the Marshalls Creek Fire Company representative determined that because we're going to be getting the reimbursement, it would be easier if we outlaid the portion of the money that we're responsible for. This demonstrates pieces of the checks. Marshalls Creek Fire Company is also providing separate checks to these individuals to account for their match for the grant.
Ah, yes.
Third one there is the fire escrow. So those folks had had their property burned. So we hold that until the insurance company signs off.
A fire escrow?
And so when a property burns down in the township that were undergoes any sort of damage related to fire, the insurance company provides the township with an amount of money that they didn't as appropriate to secure the property, just in case the property owner decides to cut and run from the situation. So we hold those funds in escrow until such as either the project is completed or we get a request from a contractor with a signed contracting estimate demonstrating that the property is going to cost so many thousands of dollars to repair, and then they can have that money released to pay the contract.
And this is the release of those funds?
That's correct.
So interesting. I had no idea it goes that way. Okay. Uh, and then there's one more question on the back. Borough, why am I missing? Are you missing?
That is the, uh, we are purchasing a used two thousand.
Oh, that's the truck?
Yes.
Okay, used truck, which we got for cheaper than we wanted, or a little bit more, but we have the budget.
Yeah, we did spend a few, a little bit more than we were expecting. We've been looking for nine months and have been successfully outbid by other individuals. Since then, because we need the piece of equipment, we're going to use other extra space in other capital improvements to cover this.
And that is, was that through like municipal or something?
Yes, we bid through municipal and we're purchasing it from another township.
I didn't know that either. So you don't pay municipal, you pay directly to the, to the owner. Okay. That's, that was all my questions.
Any other? All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Getting into the courts, we proceed to the solicitors report.
Yeah, since the last meeting, I pretended I'd released one of the two meetings. I prepared the land development agreement in the quality, classic quality homes matter. I think that's on Franklin Hill Drive. If I'm not mistaken, I sent that to the lawyer for the lawyer for view. And the majority of my time over the last two or three weeks has been working on the Mountain Manor matter, where I filed today a twenty-six page brief on the one appeal and a twenty-two page brief on the other appeal. And at this point, it'd be a responsive brief by Mountain Manor on the resort appeal, if you will. And then the matters will be scheduled for an argument in Harrisburg. My guess is probably late summer, early fall. And again, that's pretty much all I've been doing along with that agreement in classic quality homes, because those are significant briefs. They take a lot of time and probably have maybe thirty hours or more just in those briefs.
It's classic quality homes, Albert Lane, is that what that is?
Is, yes, on the one on Albert Lane, correct. So that's it. Mr. Chair, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I do not. Thank you. All right, John, engineer's report.
Thank you, Jacob. We've been working on a variety of things over the past couple of weeks. Wellness Park, we are addressing the comments by the Monroe County Conservation District, and we'll be resubmitting plans on Thursday. One of their comments does require that we retain a wetlands consultant. They want us to, I hope, prove the negative that there's no wetlands there. We don't believe there are any, but they want us to prove that. So we have to get a consultant to look at that. Vision Trail, we made an inspection. Township's working on that. It looks very good, making a lot of progress. The bike park master plan, we finished the concept three with the adjustments that was recommended. That'll be submitted to the township in a couple of days for their review, and we're working on the final report for that project. Post Office Bridge, repairs, submitted plans to pend up today for their review and comment. Hopefully, there won't be many.
Wait, is that the one next to us saying, or is it?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, we're still waiting on either a permit or review comments from B E P for the same bridge. Greenlight Go, we think we've wrapped that up. And there were two reviews that we've recommended for acceptance by the township.
So can you finish it up? What is that? Is it, does that mean it's all set already? All the timing?
I believe it is.
Think there's one minor thing with the left turn into Motor Farm Drive that we're still working on, but based on the email we got today from Signal Control, they mentioned that it might require permanent alteration. So we have to talk about what approach we want to do with that. Otherwise, everything is good to go.
I will say, I do note that getting off of some of the side streets onto two oh nine takes longer now. I guess that's the idea. Flow is faster and better overall, but it does mean you have to wait when you're on the side street.
Yeah, yeah. Unless you can make a right turn, but even then, if it's a lot of traffic, you don't get the break.
John, will that slowly adjust to times of day and?
Yeah, it, it, it's.
Days are here even though.
Yeah, it's real time. And even during the day, peak hour flow slows down, then it adjusts.
But do the, I assume they're still smart. I mean, they're still registering when you pull up, or did they just ignore that information?
No, no, it registers.
It helps to keep it.
But it's also registering that there is trees over there and or this way, and there's fifty going this way, and it does something smart. Okay.
I think that we said left. I never have issues going left onto two oh nine from Motor Farm, but I do have issues going left onto oh nine into Motor Farm.
I have issues going left from Buttermilk Falls Road onto oh nine, and my daughter has bigger issues yelling at me in the morning in time to get to school. But I mean, I would say it's like three times as long as it used to be.
In that time, right?
It is. I, I, I sort of figured that's what's going on. Okay.
And as I was going to say, two reviews came in. We're recommending that the planning commission accept them. One is for Rocco's Coating Service, and the other is, if I can pronounce his name right, Mataika, it's a minor subdivision. It's a large piece of ground where they're just cutting it into.
Is that on our?
That will be before the planning.
Oh, okay. I haven't seen her. Okay.
That's all that I have. No questions.
More than we already asked.
All right.
No, that's fine. I have them too.
All right.
Thank you. Julia, finish your report.
Sure. As John had mentioned, Greenlight Go is wrapping up, so I'm in the process of submitting for final reimbursement for that project. And in May, we made twenty-five permits issued and received sixteen right-to-noary press.
They're locked.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because last year you did a hundred and twenty-seven.
Um, I believe last year I had a hundred and thirty-five overall. But in general, this township manages or averages about ninety-three per year.
Awesome. All right. Thank you. Environmental Advisory Council, I don't know if Pat is online. If not.
I can give you an update.
If you want to give us a brief update, Alex.
Yeah, there is one update. Subcommittee Matt Jacob on.
Recommending possible hypothetical updates to the official map, focusing mostly on bike lanes, sidewalks, and adding environmentally sensitive areas like wetlands, lakes, streams, and floodplains. These updates can be discussed again next Tuesday, and this is mostly just a wish list, but it's a good start. I thought it was a pretty productive meeting with the three individuals that attended the subcommittee meeting. Right, so. Oh, also, there's going to be a July newsletter blurb and also an annual report coming up soon.
Awesome. Thanks. Tara?
Yeah.
I eighty-six month. Thanks for coming.
Yep. Good evening, Tara Mazanati. You're a Penda M J D O T I eighty-six eleven liaison. I've broken this into projects. Because we have several different angles that we're going on. So regarding the Explorer Act Gateway Community Pilot Program project, I did, as I saw Supervisor Pride at Chairman Pride at Monroe County Commissioners Meeting this week, I went there and I attended to personally and publicly thank them for their letter of support that they sent to Secretary Burgum, supporting the act, the action of being included in the Gateway Community Pilot Program. While there, I'll get to that in a moment. The second project, which is just, it's a Warren County project, but I want to update you on it. And that is Warren County Commissioner Director Jason Tsarnovsky sent the letter to the U.S. Department of Transportation asking for the I eighty projects to be scrutinized and be and be reviewed on a federal level. So we do know that that is being reviewed. So it's been received and it's being looked at. And he asked them to look at scaling back to the Rockfall mitigation project, back to the concept development phase, which is where we all were comfortable with the four-point-nine-nine month nothing burger project, and take a look at why do we really need to replace fine panels with a massive replacement project right now for the retaining wall, when maybe it's better to take a step back and look at the whole, the whole situation more comprehensively. So the third one is. So the third one is uh the fix, fix the S curve project. Which is uh, we put effort in on the Jersey side requesting the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. Include. Uh the fix the S curve, which is really by our standards defined as exit four. The Portland Columbia interchange to the Delaware Watering Bridge, which includes, of course, the S curve. But we simply call it fixed, fix the S curve. Um so that is, now it's um Nolton, Hardwood, Blirstown. And we just got the letter from our, a joint letter from our senator. In, in Jersey, our legislative districts. Um, are are differently defined than here where you have your senators or your. Ours are nice and neat. Yours are more broken apart. So we got a joint letter from our state senator, where we're all in Warren County and and much bigger than Warren County, but from our state Senator Steinhardt. Uh Assemblyman De Mayo and Assemblyman Peterson, they sent the joint letter to the NJTPA, our MPO. Supporting the request for fix the S curve to be in the the long-range transportation plan. Um that's a big deal because it's a little unusual for that kind of attention to be put on this kind of thing.
How are they gonna fix it?
You, I know, you want must've come in with this tunnel border and with tunnel.
The only way to fix it is to change the course of the river.
Well, maybe they'll look at that. So we need to study to determine how they could possibly mitigate all the issues.
NEPA Alliance also put it, uh we lobbied them to put it in there in tip two, right?
Uh, but we wouldn't put fix the S curve, we did the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's what.
So yes, it's it's feeling and sounding familiar because you and um Smithfield, uh Middle Smithfield. Stroudsburg Borough and Stroud Township submitted. Similar resolutions asking for the six eleven project. To be more comprehensive and look at all things, while they were doing their long-range transportation plan, the same thing. And then the last one, which is um the Pendup six eleven project. Their slope mitigation project and the retaining wall project. So I've started um communication with Pendup. And I'm submitting questions to them next week that I believe you would want to be asking. But I feel since I'm doing that next week, is there anything right off the top of your head that you want to make sure I ask of them regarding um? What's next with that project?
I'm I'm curious as to whether there's any plan or uh future plan with a bridge authority. To enlarge the bridge to three lanes on each way.
Well, that's a whole nother new project. I'll put that uh that that's not in their purview. That's really a Delaware, a Delaware River Joint Taller Bridge Commission question.
Right.
But in addition to that, I will put that in my pocket and see if I can ask that somewhere at the right time.
It seems like that should be something we're both involved in because it's neither Pendup nor NJ Dot. But it's, it's there and it's all a bridge authority, which is independent of either one.
It is, so.
They they have someone usually that that bobbies or sits with the the MPOs, if I'm not mistaken.
They do, they do, and they have representation from our area, they that's on their board and um whatever long-range plan they have. Uh they're well aware of the situations we have on both sides of the river. Um and I'd like to believe. Certainly, we're gonna look at. A comprehensive plan that might include include alternatives such as other bridges or a tunnel. That has to then, that's that's in their purview, that's not NJ DOTs. So we just need to make, what we're doing right now is making sure. Uh we've got enough attention on it that Jersey will do its part on what's in their purview. Study all the safety issues that are NJ DOTs. Um so yeah. I'll report back.
Excellent. Thank you. Supervised comments, Michael, Robert, anything?
I thought it was interesting, uh. I know you just got the email, I thought maybe you might share it, but. Don't steal your thunder for next week, just about sort of numbers from parks that we've had two weekends and. I'm, I was sort of surprised to see about five.
Able to better answer that.
Well, five thousand dollars in revenue, oh, um over two weekends, one with Memorial Day weekend. Uh which I thought in general it would be turning more people away than those that would be willing to pay, but. Um I think, uh yeah, somewhere around five thousand, so I was sort of surprised by that, just wanted to share that um with the public.
Um and I think that's all I really had. Awesome. Robert, anything? I don't have anything uh to add on top of what Michael said, just that. Uh the weather's been an important factor, but we still get a lot of people at Marshals Falls, far more there compared to now, at least thus far. Alright, we have no old business this evening, so we'll proceed to the new business and the consent agenda. Give the consideration to accept the resignation of Brett Hartwright from the Environmental Advisory Council, the consideration to appoint Robert J. Kidwell. And Newman Williams to serve as the alternate township solicitor, two hundred dollars per hour, the same rate uh that we pay Ron. New consideration to execute three agreements with the Cohen Law Group regarding cable franchise fee collection, audit and renewal. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that. Well, save my.
Well, I'll second.
Okay, second, Mr. Albert, discussion?
I I'd just like to uh thank Brett for his service and uh we will miss him.
Michael still be around.
Yeah, I'll be around.
I'll second that, sorry. Thanks. Um I had a question on um the Cohen law, so this is related to the Blue. Blue Ridge Cable, obviously, and I was on his presentation. I just want to be clear, so there's three agreements here, correct?
Right.
One is to, well, or is it two, it's one.
Really technically two. Um.
One is to do a new agreement with Blue Ridge. Um because he thought our current agreement's not great, to request, to do an audit. Uh that was all one, right? And the other one is to.
Notice of violation.
Notice of violation, um.
So they offer fifteen percent discount to combine.
Yeah.
Uh the franchise fee uh renewal and the audit uh collection.
And that's a flat fee.
The hour, the, correct.
But did, the one thing I didn't see, did he give an estimate on how many hours? It's the one thing I'm a little bit. I mean, he talks about how great it is to do a flat fee on the other one and then does not give any sort of idea of how much it's gonna cost. Did, did he mention that to?
I think he expected it to be less generally than uh the total of those two, but we can ask him for more. Detail, I think he mentioned that uh. Blue Ridge Cable uh in his experience had been quick. Quicker to resolve, but yeah.
I guess my one just question is if we, you know. At some point, we don't want to. You know, the numbers are gonna be small compared to how much money we will get back from Blue Ridge and it does seem from our conversation that. Um. They have reached their contract and furthermore. Just because taxes weren't, it's not a tax, so just because a fee wasn't passed on to the user, there's nothing in the law. That says they have to do that, the fee is to Blue Ridge because they're using township property. And they're allowed to pass that on to the user, but they don't have to, so the fact that they didn't pass it on doesn't mean that um. They should, didn't have to pay it to us, so it's good news, it looks very likely that we will get that fund since obviously it's already just. Still, at some point, I would love to understand, I don't know, is there any way to, you know, do a maximum number of hours or or?
I can reach out to him and ask.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to approve, uh you know, vote to approve it, I just would love in this a little bit more language about estimated um time of. As long as it's, I mean, we're looking to get a hundred and ten thousand dollars back and it's um. So you know, like. I mean, that would be a lot of hours, that would be like four hundred hours, I don't know the numbers.
Uh yeah, three forty an hour.
So what's that, I mean, just so I can approve it on condition. Or uh. And you'd have to do three hundred hours, which you could better not, but.
I don't think so.
I mean, I. I don't even know, is there a, Ron, I mean, you're not doing this, but from your experience, I mean, these guys are experts in this area, which is why we're using them. Um how many hours might someone normally do for something like this?
Fifty, thirty hours.
Thirty?
Yeah, I think that's.
Are we the only township in the county that's had this problem?
Well, in this county maybe, but it sounds like he deals with this sort of.
He deals with Blue Ridge all the time.
But what, what we've done in the past with um Cohen Law Group is. Um if there was something that other townships were also involved in, we just sort of do it all together and share the the pricing that we sold. I don't know if.
No, no one else is going through what we are. What did they come out to?
That was like eleven, ten thousand five hundred dollars, I guess thirty hours.
Roughly comparable.
Which is less than ten percent of the monies that we would receive, so um. I'm just trying to think of how I can, we can approve this with some sort of condition that not to exceed forty hours. Can we say that?
I mean, technically, that's not in his agreement, but I think that if we.
I'm just saying, is he willing to adjust the agreement?
Well, have you gotten any estimate from them?
That's what I'm at, he didn't include an estimate, that's why I'm, that's why I'm upset.
So I think we should get an estimate first and then figure what, whether we want to.
I I'm fine to.
I just know we want to get, we want to start getting.
I am fine to sign the three uh as is, but I I think if you want to have Robert amend his motion to. Say that we would uh revisit the agreement if it, if they expect it to exceed.
If they expect it to exceed forty hours of work.
Yeah.
It's reasonable.
Would you amend your motion, does that affect Robert?
I will.
Okay, and would you resecond that?
I'll second.
Oh, great.
Um what else was there, Mike? Franchise fee. Solicitor, our client, that's all my questions.
Yes.
My question, I understand that Verizon is planning on expanding services in our township. And um I'm a Verizon customer, when I was living in Nashville, Verizon offered um neighborhood Wi-Fi. Just saying, it was, but they, is there any possibility Verizon might consider offering Wi-Fi to the Springfield Township?
We've explored that, but not. The expansion right now is really just with with their physical devices and not with services so far.
And that.
And the cable franchise, yeah, does not cover this.
If you're talking about uh, I just thought you're talking about the um. Zoning hearing.
No, it's just, no, that, yeah.
Cause that's exclusively cellular, as I, as I understand, but.
Chris?
Well, we're kind of locked in with, like, Blue Ridge, it'd be nice to have a legitimate alternative.
Yeah.
Correct, and I I think that we're we're hoping to know more about that, I know that some folks are discussing fiber optic and and things like that tomorrow. On a future occasion, so we're hoping that we get something, but. I would be curious to know that a couple of townships that are underserved. Uh different than what we, you know, have, which is just a straight-up monopoly, there's other places where it's just no service available, like price township. I know that the broadband authority approved grants. Um to help get them online, so that could be something that comes of that, but we'll know more hopefully in a couple of months.
And just so it's clear, this Blue Ridge discussion is just about TV, it's just cable TV.
Right.
And it has nothing to do with internet.
I think we should note, uh what was interesting, you said this. With regard to franchise fee audits, there um are twenty-seven different types of revenue that companies can utilize. Uh or or sources, so um we might net out better on a future deal anyway, at least that's the hope. Cause the current deal technically runs till twenty twenty-eight, but they would welcome a longer term renewal with new information. This one is currently thirty-one uh years in the same vein. Alright, any other questions?
I do, I have two questions. This is Joanne, um I'm on Zoom, I wasn't able to get there in time. Um my, I just had two questions regarding the Marshall's Fall House demolition contract and then the tarn chip. Contract.
Those in about two minutes, uh so. Right side of the uh the consent agenda, so we'll do that first and then we'll talk about.
Okay, I was just wondering who and where the tarn chip was gonna be and who was. Oh, hold on.
No worries.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, okay, the consideration to award the Marshall's Falls House demolition contract. Um before I entertain a motion, Julia has the bid numbers on that and we'll do it in the same format for the tarn chip in a moment.
Okay, so the township received four bids for this project. Um the first one was project excavating at seventy thou- seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and zero cents. If Possinger at a hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred dollars. Victor Gardens at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and one dollars. And Cobalt Construction at two hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, our uh engineer for this project recommend the award of the contract to the low bidder, Brardrick Excavating.
Just to clarify, the difference is like sixty thousand between that and the next lowest there.
Yes, um they did note that difference and they double-checked to make sure that the low bidder understood the scope. And would be able to reliably complete everything, so we've dotted our i's and cross the.
The scope includes an assessment of asbestos in the building.
Yes.
But does not include the abatement of it, I believe. Correct? I thought I saw that.
No.
I don't think any of them did, just.
There is the unit price allowances to adjust whether additional abatement or remediation is required beyond the the basic skill.
Correct.
Uh they have the, they reserve the right to get an asbestos cell on this subcontract, that's about.
Yeah.
Let's cross our fingers, uh for those.
When will this be done?
Um we'll have a timeline for completion once the bid is awarded and we work through all the contacting with uh. Dart and we'll go from there.
If we should do it like Las Vegas, we could blow it up.
Uh they won't let us do that, I'm thankful for the joke, um but we'll actually, um either Alex or myself will be on site when they start demolition. We plan to save uh a few key pieces of the house to help preserve the the concept of Titanic.
In addition to what we've uh, I was finally able to bring some materials from inside the house uh this past week. Uh so we have all of those documents in our custody for the future kiosks and whatnot. Alright, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to award the low bid, uh to award the bid to the low bidder, Schardick Excreting Inc. at seventy-seven thousand two hundred and seventy. Dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albert. Second by Mr.
What was her name again? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it, B?
It is uh Br- Br- Brardrick, yeah, if you want to stop. It's B R D A R I C, Dar- Darick Excavating Inc.
Okay, okay. Wow, seventy-seven and the next one was one thirty-four, okay.
Yay. Yep, and then Cobalt was the high at two hundred thirty-six nine, so. Yep.
Yeah, you can't, you can't have like the fire company practice a controlled burn or anything, right, to get rid of it?
Absolutely too structurally unsound for them to do that, uh they did.
Well, and so I also reached out to the Fire Commission to ask exactly that. Um because of the wires that are right next to the house, uh besides the fact that you're not allowed to do that anymore, I guess. Um we would cut and lose power to everyone north of on Marshall's Creek Road and we felt that was unfair. Especially size of that house and how long it would be burning, um we were. We would not receive kind words for putting so many people out of power for that long.
So then this like an expense to the township, is this like anything in any of those grants that you guys get?
Yes, it's being covered by uh a combination of two different grants, one is a. Monroe County Redevelopment Authority Grant and the other is a D C E D grant.
And those are ones that we have to match, right, U Ds?
Yes, we're using the Monroe County Redevelopment Authority Grant as a match to the D C D grant.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Okay, we're gonna go through the same uh process on our consideration to award tarn chip contract. And just to state, it's for Franklin Hill Road and it's three, about three and a quarter miles.
So the township received three bids for this, as Jacob said, it's uh for Franklin Hill Road. Um. Uh for a forty-one thousand square foot double coating of the Tunis tarn chip. We received three bids, one for asphalt, excuse me, one from Asphalt Maintenance Solutions at a hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Pocono Spray Patching at a hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. And Midland Atl- at Midland Asphalt Materials at a hundred and eighty-one. And Midland Atl- at Midland Asphalt Materials at one hundred and eighty one thousand four hundred and sixty six dollars. Uh which puts our low bidder at Asphalt Maintenance Solutions, we've touched base with Penn Dot, evidence would pay with us accepting a little bit.
What about Chris, you know, approve them as a vendor?
Yep.
Yes, and just so everyone knows, this is covered by Liquid Fuels money that we received from the state. So.
I I was gonna ask, is we um. Cause we're now doing some of our own paving in-house, right, between.
We always have, we're just doing more, I understand.
Okay, more in-house.
So in lieu of a contract, total repave of something we're doing is to extend the.
Right, I understand my, but yeah, I don't, while I don't like tarn chip, I do, from my reading, I understand it's, it actually is useful. But is there a reason we don't do this ourselves as well, or I'm just, I'm curious?
Uh we don't have the capacity or the vehicles and the equipment in order to do a tarn chip.
Alright. And is this, um what is our, do you remember what our total liquid fuels? So that's a tough question, I don't know where.
Isn't generally three hundred twenty nine, three hundred turn back mileage?
Yeah, it's it's somewhere between three hundred and twenty five and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Can liquid fuels be used to cover your um your uh team costs, or does it have to be per contract?
You can, it is a nightmare to put uh payroll for liquid fuels, so it is something that.
Nightmare, and it's very. It's easier, well, but I assume you, when you buy.
We cover our existing materials and our existing pave jobs that are in-house, those get approved also through Kevin O'Donnell when they're through liquid fuels.
Okay.
So that they have a record and then we, yeah, cause if we don't really spend, you can roll over so many times, but we don't, we always spend more than than that.
Good, alright.
I'll entertain a motion to award uh the tarn chip bid to Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC at one hundred forty eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim, do I hear a second?
I will second.
Second, is there any after questions?
Can I second? You're just talking about redoing the road surface itself.
Correct.
You gonna do anything about shoulders?
Um.
Surveying please.
Oh, please, sorry.
Thank you.
I don't think the tarn chip is a surface, so we can't have the shoulder, um for shoulders.
Yeah. No, I understand tarn chip is sort of maintenance only, not growing, expanding.
Well, I mean, there's other things that we're doing about the shoulders, but like it's.
I understand that.
Okay, correct, I mean, we're we're gonna do our own in-house maintenance of that, but that that won't be covered in this bid.
Alright.
Any other question? All in favor?
Alright.
Um, okay. Um next is a discussion on the commercial use of our township parks. This is relatively brief, cause we've only got one request, generally, well. Well, yeah, so generally, um people are free to use the parks, you know, as long as they follow the policies, but. Now that we're seeing folks like the Pocono Day Tripper, which is bringing in tourists, they've asked to essentially get a fee waiver. The company hasn't formally asked us yet, but they wanna have that discussion um about using our parks for uh stops along their uh land day trip. And someone suggested, well, why don't we do it free, currently parks are ten dollars a person, there's an average of roughly eighteen people per uh bus load. Um they're bringing in this, to thus far has only included Marshall's Falls Park. Given the state of the parking there, it's relatively small, so it's a kind of a big impact, because a lot of individuals will park up there, we have twelve spaces. So a bus is pretty big and we don't want them on the side of the road, cause that's really dangerous. So I I think it's best to entertain some sort of uh cost, they can bear the burden of that wear and tear. On the park and I think we can get an agreement with them similar to what we have for um the various sports uh.
Well, that's what I wanna say, I mean, you said it's the first commercial request, but I mean effectively we have agreements with three different entities, E S Y A, F C Pocono. Um East Strasburg Little League, um while they are, while they're, those are all nonprofit, I believe, right, yeah, they're all nonprofit.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we still have agreements and there's still requirements and insurance and um. My recommendation on this would be that there'd be a similar agreement in place that requires insurance. That requires, I mean especially if they're gonna, we're gonna make it so it's not just your standard ten dollar fee per person that is from out of the county. Um and that there'd be a fee associated with um it and I think it can be a a reasonable number, um. I don't know exactly what that number is yet.
Yeah, I mean, I think it takes some discussion with them formally, I know that this came up about two weeks ago and hasn't since, but I think that. As the season goes on, they will probably want to resume, and also we might get others. We usually don't get a ton as far as like the kayaking and canoeing and stuff. Our parks aren't always the most desirable to launch for that, they're more like places to stop. Um but we should have something that would probably be good for any future group that would wanna use it typically.
Well, I mean, Alex and I have been working on the E S Y A agreement, which, you know, expired in March, um after twenty five years, so. And that has been sent to E S Y A for review, but I think it serves as a good template for um. Future agreements for, cause it's a use agreement, so that's effectively what you're doing, is saying you are a specialized group that's not. Um just public, you know, and that document highlights that you're not gonna get charged the ten dollars per um. Per per person if they're from out of the county, because you have this use agreement, so I think it'd be similar. I don't see why, I mean, obviously amended, it's not a sports field, it's, you know, it's using the park in a different way, but.
Right.
I think it'll just be a question of what that number is and, you know. What uh what's reasonable and um. And what they're willing to. To sign, yeah.
Cause thus far, uh for the folks that have been at Marshall's Falls, they haven't returned since then, but I think they'll want to, so we could probably reach out to them, Alex, if you found. Uh this week, just to get their um what their line of thinking is.
Yeah, I mean, they might be like, uh, we don't wanna spend anything, it was a free stop, we thought, and then we know it's not. You know, if it's not gonna be, I just don't think it should be free, cause it's a commercial on a rise, if it was a local nonprofit. You know, we can, and that's what we do for the East Strasburg Little League, they maintain the fo- uh baseball field, um they basically pay a dollar. You know, it's about covering the cost, so if there's eighteen people coming in, you know, twice a week, that's gonna tread on the park use, and if those are all non-residents, then we need to collect something.
Right, cause they run Friday, Saturday and Sunday, at least this particular group, and it's thirty dollars a person. That they're, you know, asking, it's the trolley tour and then.
Yeah, so it's obviously not gonna be able to increase their price to four dollars a person, I mean, they could try, but I don't, that it's probably not gonna happen.
Right. It is one of the cheaper tours, they do also do some others, but that's at least one that we would be affected by. Robert, is that sent?
It's reasonable.
Um.
I don't know, I'll, there's a public.
Anyone have any next thing? We'll go on to the parts and uh recreation regulations update, I think Alex made a couple of small tweaks in the last one. I think Alex, barring any updates that you have, we just need to solicit a legal review of that before we add the township, right?
Yeah, it's sounding about right, it's um. You know, these updates represented on April twenty seventh and then April twenty second and May twenty seventh, and they're in ordinance for now, per your request. And I think they're ready for, you know, you wanna do any further discussion? If not, I I really believe we're gonna need to approve.
Yeah.
By the way, our draft agreements with the. The different sports entities references this document, also highlights that it can be changed by public action by the board in time, but they are bound by these um rules as well.
Right. I think Alex, the only changes that we added were the thing about the police power and. What else did we change between the, between the last time we saw this and now? I think the other tweet was.
There's a big tweet.
Drone and stuff.
Drones, yeah, a little bit more elaboration on the drones, there was the um. Lit the littering. Uh as you recall, putting garbage outside of receptacles, that language has been added, there's been, you know, a couple tweaks here and there, but, you know. Everything that you've seen or discussed in the past is here.
Ron, is this something that you've got capacity for at the moment, I know it's short, it's one of the shorter ones, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's a shorter one, so, yeah, I'll be able to look at this and and report back, so.
Alright.
So he reviews it, comes back, if we, then we, we like it, the next one, discussion.
And we can go up in July.
And we can advertise for it, it'd be, okay, it's a lot, gotcha. Try to look that up relatively quickly, cause you know, the the park sheet is a palm.
Yeah, so is it possible to have this in time for the?
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe this changes anything in chapter twenty seven, correct?
It's just chapter sixteen.
So this would be outside of meeting the thirty day window for the Monroe County Planning Commission.
Right. Yeah.
Um so feasibly, if you wanted to make those changes, um.
This is just once a week for two successive weeks, or is this?
Or it's once a week, just one time.
Yeah, just one time, seven days before.
No later than seven days before.
Um. Giving myself a little bit of breathing room, feasibly, it could be on the July.
Yeah.
Eighth meeting?
That's, that's what I was asking, I think that. We can make that happen.
Yeah, I thought, and that'll obviously depend on when we get Ron's review, but. And this is what the board wants, as soon as I get the review, I can just schedule it for the next appropriate meeting. Come on.
At that point then, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to authorize the advertisement pending the changes from the solicitor. Do I hear that motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim, do I hear a second?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Albert, questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Okay. Data center ordinance update, says slightly more on the housekeeping side. Um I know we had asked Alex to also put this one into draft ordinance form and also create some maps, uh mapping for us to look at, consider where these. Types of uses could be per that draft, and also we have the Penn Future uh model ordinance in front of us also, so we can find.
So there's, I'm looking at two very different ordinances, both related to. Data centers, which as I understand right now. Um and are, is just written as a one paragraph definition, right?
Yeah.
Or like one sentence definition and it's a. A by right use in E D.
Correct.
That's currently how it is.
Correct.
Yeah.
We're seeking to add some limitations and aesthetic things, I know, Alex, you're ready to compare the two and then we can decide.
Yeah, come on. Yeah, if you want, I could just also give, you you just remind the board, so you've talked about this at three meetings, September twenty fourth, October twenty second and November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Um the ordinance was finalized based on the feedback and discussion with the supervisors and zoning officer conducted a review, that's in your packet. Um the township received this few months ago. The main thing I just wanted to point out to the board is you requested technical assistance from the county planning commission. And, you know, it was basically based on the assumption of a minimum principal building square footage of two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. We asked the planning commission which parcels in the township in the E D or N one zone could feasibly, you know, based on that square footage, um. That half the data center potentially would be, so. Anything in paint here was identified as feasible just based on that square footage, there are some parcels that obviously probably certainly wouldn't have one on it, just for various reasons. They didn't discriminate with onsite features like some slopes or whatnot. But as you can see, this is definitely feasible in at least a couple of different parts of your township.
Does that include setbacks?
We asked that and this is what they um gave back to us, that was part of the the request was to take into consideration the two hundred foot residential setback.
And then did that, I'm just curious, did they um look at. The size of these buildings, because just, if you got a huge, large setback, which I think this does, fairly large setback. I mean, it might be feasible in that area, but you can only have the size of a home and so it's actually not feasible, I'm curious.
It's a good question, um this is as far as they got with that level of detail. Um.
Well, the one at the airport, it's uh the the top one, I think.
This one here, yeah, that's all the empty ones, so.
That's all wetlands too.
There is wetlands in there, I wouldn't say it's all wetlands, but there are wetlands scattered about those properties, most likely.
I mean, I think the key was that they could potentially be on these sites, but it's not practical to put it on all of them. We just wanted to see where it would be allowed essentially based on the minimum tax.
Well, I mean, the only risk, right? This is a legal risk, if you put it so it's so restrictive, um that it is effectively impossible, they can. Take you to court and say, you made it impossible and unlawful, because there is nowhere in this township at all where I could possibly put this.
Right, to that point, Michael, we specifically wrote to the county and mentioned any potential exclusionary zoning issues and they came back with this.
Okay.
So I mean, you know, that's what we wrote in the email to them, so, and this is what they gave back to us.
Well, it's good that we've done this at a minimum, so that if ever we have to go to court, because it's so restrictive, we can say we did this process, so.
So, anyway, um that's the map I wanted to present. And then, if you don't have any additional questions in the map, again, that was generated by the county per our written request, then there's the model, two, two, two mod, two ordinances, one was the one that the supervisor worked on. Um back in November with me, and then very recently, Penn Future put together a phenomenal model ordinance on this type of use.
It's just unsolicited, right?
This was unsolicited, they just reached out to all the townships in the county, because this is in a, you know, an emerging new use. In the county, uh es- especially in townships like Smithfield, where you have these zones right next to residential, I feel like there's a little bit more of a threat in terms of. Overall. You know, changes that may occur if one of these is proposed. And ordinance on this use may not have been updated too recently, so there's just a lot more criteria to keep up with the emerging technology. And so it's really up for discussion by the board on how you'd like to proceed, now that you have all this information.
Well, I think we contrasted, at least on a cursory level, the both of them. And there's some areas where maybe the model ordinance is is stronger, but there's other areas where your draft is more restricted. So is it like an ala carte, can we pick and choose, like I I think. The current ordinance contemplates a data center that that really isn't glorified uh. Phone banking center or.
Yeah.
You know, a server, you know, a server room and not uh stuff that deals with uh large language learning models or. A I or anything like that. So this is. What we're considering. Do you wanna go into maybe the differences between the?
Well, the first, I could if you want, the first difference is the definitions, so obviously your ordinance has, as you recall, beta disaster recovery.
Yeah.
Recovery facility sort of lumped into this type of use, you could keep that, but one of the things I really liked that in future is they added data center accessory use. And they, and and so in the one that we put together, again, this was a, a lot of this language came from Virginia's various county ordinances. And there's a lot of reference to equipment such as substations, whereas the model ordinance sort of. Lumps all those sorts of things, those accessories into one definition, so I think that's what I would recommend going with is take Penn Future's definition and. Just take those definitions and and put them into yours, and you can kind of go through the whole ordinance, I don't know that we wanna go through line by line, but a lot of analogous situations like that. Like for example, Penn Future's ordinance, if you look at aesthetics, is not necessarily nearly as detailed as the one that the supervisors here put together, so I don't know that you'd wanna necessarily change that if they're gonna be adjacent to residential. But there's other things that, you know, Penn Future has more detail on, I think your sound provisions are stronger than Penn Futures, I don't know that I'd recommend changing that. But there's a lot of things that we could kind of parse apart and sort of put it, put it as an amalgam together, or maybe I could come back, you know, in a couple of weeks and 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 re-present it, if it is up to you. How you like to proceed, I think.
I will, I will say that Penn Futures ordinance to me is very e- easy to read, I got it, but it's also, I think, a little bit simpler than what we had.
Yeah. Definitely worth it.
Or, I mean, and I I question the sound, whether do we wanna just incorporate that into an existing, like is, do we already have that ordinance and is it repetitive? Um so maybe it's not necessary, we can just reference our sound ordinance?
You could, but it doesn't, it only goes to decimals, this, the word that the language you have in your current zoning ordinance deals with other um physical aspects of sound, like the humming and the vibrations that may not be picked up with despicable. So I don't know that I'd recommend just relying on your noise ordinance.
So is the use so.
I think it's up to you, if you, I mean, you could do that if you wanna symbolize it.
Well, I guess, is it so unique that like a a a more, the other.
Other uses of the township.
Yeah, because of what they call in the. The Penn Future one talks about sensitive receptors, I mean, obviously for us, that's like any of the residential properties that are around, nowhere could actually disturb people. Is the thought with our graph that we have, that the use is so unique that it warrants its own sound, if not exception, but additional criteria.
My recommendation is it is a unique use, um.
I guess the question is, if this sound is so much better, should this sound not just be in our sound ordinance and amending that?
That's probably a question to talk to John about.
It, the question, well, the question is like, is. Cause when I read this, I, this could be the same for any. Any industry, right, why are we pointing out?
Yeah.
Just, I mean, if there is.
So you're saying that maybe we should consider different industrial standards period that are generally the same as this.
If there's a factory that has these exact issues. Correct.
Rather than the same ones that we have for, for mowing lawn or playing music.
It just, it makes sense. It makes sense to incorporate this, if this is is felt that this is so important and we missed it in the noise ordinance. Amend that, incorporate it over and take it out of here so that it applies to everything, not just data centers, that's all I'm saying, and if it is. Because if it's just being applied to data centers, but it's an issue for anything, the question is, well, why are we only applying it to data centers?
Well, I think the big thing is knowing that there are some key differences and then the requirement of a noise study being submitted this, I don't think there's any other industrial development that's required thus far. To submit a noise study. I think it generally is just for our generators.
I don't know. Have you heard of noise studies?
I can't say that I have.
I just, I don't.
That doesn't mean it exists.
I know it would look like, yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you look at the like the octave band versus the decibel, I I do recall we had this conversation, or at least I had mentioned it briefly. Um, about how, and this is what you have in your ordinance already, just to just to clarify for this use, you already have this, but this chart is just copied and pasted. So I already.
No, so this is the sound, is that isn't the same?
Yeah, I literally, I took that 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 table and just put it in, like this is the.
This is from the sound ordinance or?
This is from our existing standards for data centers.
Also the decibels.
This, the octave band versus sound pressure is what you currently have in your zoning ordinance for data centers. A lot of this, if you.
No.
A lot of this. A lot of this is, a lot, a good, a decent amount of this language already exists as criteria for data centers, so that you're ahead of a lot of townships that don't even have to find, just to clarify.
Right.
Do we know when that was changed?
I think it was about twenty nineteen.
The the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, there's already a lot of your existing criteria and then there's a a lot more new criteria based on these discussions and now Penn Future has even more criteria. You know, and it's similar to what you have in here, but a little bit different, I feel like it. You know. It's up to you if you want me to just kind of go through a point by point and see what makes sense rather than replicate efforts.
No, I don't, I don't think we need to duplicate efforts, like I think our aesthetics are pretty strong. Based upon what you've said, I think. The important thing is what we said was the. The maximum uh size of each building, right?
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Well, we don't necessarily li- limit the size of the building, we just in- indicate setbacks from residential.
I guess what I'm saying, I I remember when we did the warehouse. Uh, and logistics center ordinance, the other big boxes, we wanted to sort of.
Yeah.
Determine, you know, what was permitted and then, you know, what was the conditional use based upon the footprint. And I think in this case, we may want to. Uh, consider either a gross, um. I don't know if we're allowed to have a maximum gross square footage for the entire project or if it has to be by building. That's probably a John question.
You mean like in the dimensional standard section?
Yeah.
I mean, if you have a high restriction and you have setbacks, I pers- I'm not sure why.
I'm just asking, is that?
Especially if you look at our, the, oh.
Oh, that's that's why I'm asking that question, just to make sure that we, that's whether or not that's overkill.
Can I ask the question on um? The. Not the the. So our dra- our original draft, do we want to remove all disaster, I know that's what we currently have is this disaster recovery facility, but. Is it complicating things, can we just, should we pull it out and just have disaster recovery as its own definition completely separate with different, I mean, I. I don't know if you do in a gas disaster recovery facility, I don't even know what that is.
I think it was just, that was sort of in reference to the, what was it, Wall Street West thing?
But it's like for.
Or recovery as in like data recovery.
Correct, it it is for when you have obviously some catastrophic data related event or something, but the peak usage of those facilities. Is far rarer than this, which would be an everyday thing.
Yeah.
And is a disaster recovery? Oh, what's the word?
Disaster recovery facility?
Is a disaster recovery facility not also considered a data center?
I think the board had previously said you should, you should just have that as everything so they don't come and say, oh, no, look, it's a. Disaster recovery recor- facility, not data center, if I recall the conversation correctly, it's up to you, I mean, you know, and futures.
Yeah. I mean, it definitely sounds like it fits inside of the data center definition.
Yeah. Yeah. You could, you know, I think ten futures definitions, if you were just to take those two and delete those two, you probably would be okay, I have my.
Or you could even say like including. In the definition of a data center, including disaster recovery centers and then you define that elsewhere.
Yeah.
As opposed, because throughout this ordinance, it keeps the same, and disaster recovery, and it's just.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm getting into semantics, but it's sounding a little.
Redundant. I, well, it improves the readability, it, you know, doesn't confuse standards, so I think that makes sense.
Right.
Let's move on.
Any other key differences that we need to look at before you?
I don't, if I can come back in a few weeks with sort of my recommendations based on, you know, combining the two together and then. We can have a follow up discussion.
Yeah.
And I personally would love, I it's, I find it hard to look at two different ordinances, if it was all one. Then we can sort of say, is that too much, is that too little? And 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 go from there, knowing that it was using this. I know it's just came out.
Yeah.
That's valuable. But it's, it's nice that it's just, it's amazing timing, but.
Yeah, I mean, if we could theoretically consider it in the same way that we've had other ordinances, at least aligned however possible. I guess that's, that's gonna shake some legwork, so maybe after this meeting, but you know, two weeks after, like.
Yeah. Yeah, like side by side.
Yeah.
I do like, I do like the structure of the of the model ordinance, just so very definitions, this is the buffering, this is the. Dimension standards, this is the screening required, this is the noise issue. I know yours does that too, it's just. Maybe yours just looks more legal speak, maybe it's okay.
I think both have merits, but I think ours is stronger in some areas, but. Obviously, this one is is good too.
I mean, the one thing that the model doesn't have, Jacob, is it doesn't have that submission checklist, I know the board had talked a lot about that, it's sort of like a, hey, this is what you're gonna have to do if you wanna submit a data center on your property as a, as a land development plan. So that is definitely one section the model ordinance doesn't have.
Yeah, I wanted, so that's us telling. Tell them how to put an application, is that typical in our ordinance on? On the definition of that use?
No, not really, I mean, it was basically sort of like the board had wanted to kind of give them a, get a little bit of help, say, hey, look, just in case you're interested, you might wanna. You know, heads up, here's what you're gonna have to do. And then it references in sections, but no, I don't know of any other place where that exists in your ordinance, but there may be somewhere in there.
It could theoretically be still good for this ordinance, at least as as a legal, a piece of legal writing, but. Not incorporated here, I was gonna say it could be incorporated in the conditional use criteria.
A struggle to belong to this, exactly. Correct.
Um, for where it goes in the economic development zones, that would be an amendment elsewhere in chapter twenty seven.
But.
Same same document, just placing housing in a different spot.
Uh, that is a question, I mean, obviously the draft ordinance doesn't stipulate the sort of policy decision of where it would be and what would be allowed.
Right.
But we are looking at conditional. In uh ED and by right in a M one.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Seems recent to me.
Yeah.
I mean, it's more strict than it is right now, so.
Yeah. It it's similar to what we've done with the warehouse already. This just obviously came under a lot of people's radar, but thankfully we've kind of had a start, right?
Is there any provision for sunsetting use of a day's data center in your?
Sunsetting, do you mean for like future redevelopment, like what, like decommissioning, like we're talking about with solar?
No.
Not so far.
Those those buildings last twenty five years. And it's a very big building, what can happen after that, the user moves out or something happens to the building.
Uh, is, I I think that's a good question, how Penn Future, Penn Futures?
Mm hmm.
How open are they to questions?
Oh, they're happy to.
I'm sure, yeah, for.
Awful.
Can we fire off that question, I I'm genuinely curious, I mean. If we had had those provisions in malls, we'd maybe be in a different place right now.
Yeah.
In, um. I I just be curious. And then the answer might be, it's too hard, you can't do it, I don't know from the legal standpoint.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are either of you two familiar with this, I mean. Usually the way Pennsylvania planning is, you find out after, right?
No, yeah, but usually that's that's market driven, I mean, people buy abandoned buildings on a time and turn them into new users.
Right. I mean, I know the whole impetus for the economic development zone beyond simplification of B one, B two and C one. Uh, zones was to encourage infill and redevelopment. So like that's theoretically baked into the ordinance, but I guess when it's a building this big.
There's so many other uses.
Yeah. Uh, cause like you can't, can't really put apartments, you know, except for like along with the sun, right, because it's not gonna be any light elsewhere, you know, for the window.
I will not, I will not.
And they did not easily.
Anyway, I think, but if you can reach out to Penn Futures. Uh.
Well, I'd be curious to see if there was any bonding that could eventually, or letter of credit or something. Or when it would theoretically be done, um. There could be lingering environmental effects, I mean, I I I am doubtful of that, but based upon what they use to cool the place. Um, I'd be interested to see, does that stay forever or does that?
If it gets abandoned, is it sitting there, is it dangerous, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, so Alex, if you wanna. Ask those two questions of Henry, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd have the answer.
I think that's the most natural place to to end this and then we can talk about that in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
Which is, we hope we don't agree.
Yeah. Anyone have your answer?
So you know that the data center is loud, so you're willing to alter the noise ordinance for the data centers because. The data center is loud. So you're willing to, you know it's loud and you're still pushing to have it added in. And adjust the noise ordinance, why do they get a special?
We're 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 not talking, we're we're saying that they are loud, therefore we want it to be even tighter because it's an inordinate use. Yeah.
Yeah, this is about increasing the restrictions, so right now it's allowed by right, for example, on the ED and this would be by conditional use. It's adding a bunch of restrictions, a bunch of applications.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Alex, you said the county said that you're allowed to build in the wetlands areas?
They didn't say that.
But they said.
They they gave us that map in response to our inquiry.
And and you know, the airport. Near next to like the hall in the wetland.
They highlighted the parcels that it could potentially be on, they did not highlight the specific area that is buildable.
Okay, because there's one parcel that I see that is in the wetland.
Uh, yeah, I agree with you, the those lands are not all buildable, but obviously the county just gave the bare minimum of what? With setbacks and with what else for the criteria? You said wetlands or no?
It was based on two hundred fifty thousand square feet and then we asked if, you know, the setbacks would trigger an exclusionary zoning issue and. This is what they provided us, so.
Right, maybe because the 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 wetlands and other things are. Our buffers are in line with what like the state model ordinance ECHO one sixty seven is, so. That in and of itself is not likely to be exclusionary, but if we said it was only allowed on. You know. I don't know, what what's a parcel that's too small for two hundred fifty thousand square feet, if we said it was only allowed on on those.
It's only allowed on an acre or less.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right.
That'd be exclus- exclusory.
Exclusionary, yeah, yeah, so those are just the lots that that they they could be on, but that doesn't account for. You know, everything else.
But this is everything, they can be on those because they're not all.
Right.
No, cause cause they could disrupt the ecosystem, that's, you know, whatever.
Correct.
And that's why, you know, maybe you guys should really think about it and look at other ordinances.
Well, I sure think that this discussion highlights that, so. So Alex, with our divine meeting.
Motion to table that. Right.
Exactly, we don't have to.
That was a discussion.
Yeah, we don't. But that would hopefully be in time for our uh. Right twenty second meeting. On lighting, we are in a slightly more developed place where the hope is just to get final legal review on that before. Uh, we would advertise that for adoption, do you wanna remind us where we're at on that, Alex?
Yeah, there's two things, as as you correctly indicated, Mr. Chairman, the legal review is still pending, um. Now, but last, the most recent discussion the board supervisors had on this was December tenth, two thousand twenty four. And then we just recently got a review on June third by our new zoning officer and this, and I wanted to, this is. One of the reasons I asked for the board to discuss it tonight is because we need to go through this comments, you should have it in your board packet and make decisions on.
It's the very last page.
We also got the Monroe County Planning Commission.
And the planning commission um had sent a review in the past, yes. Um, some some edits were made, Michael, as you may recall, on enforcement and like lighting control officers since the county review. So that is worth pointing out, but the bulk of the ordinance remains the same as when the county planning commission did their review. Um, I, you can also discuss that tonight, I was hoping if it's okay with the board to just go through these. Or comments from the zoning officer and make decisions on um adjusting that language.
Yeah, cause the others, I guess, we addressed through. Ron and John, right?
So it'll be on page twenty seven, Jacob, of that. Um, of the whole ordinance, so the lighting ordinance.
You got the first comment?
Yeah, it would just be like comments one three four, just if we could just go, number four is just a typo, obviously, so I don't know that the board needs to.
That's fine.
Number one and two are are something.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's get into that.
Or require submission, uh, you wanna read his comment?
If you like, it basically section thirty two one oh seven, plan submission requirements, there it. The zoning officer pointed out that this A doesn't make any distinction between commercial and residential. It doesn't list exemption based on size or scope of the project, does not exclude projects that aren't introducing any new after lighting. Um, perhaps you should do that, you should make those distinctions, maybe just limited to commercial or or you, but like commercial uses in the ED and M one zone, so it's not to. Create two owners of an issue for R one properties.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
In other words, right now, the way the ordinance is drafted. If you were residential and you were doing a, uh. I don't know.
Well, they're.
A a mission to your house. You'd have to submit a plotted illuminance. With matrix calculator, you'd have to submit a whole study on the lighting, even though you're not adding any light.
Right, the example he has there, there's an example, this would mean that a zoning permit application for an eighty square foot shed is required to submit everything. Under thirty two one oh seven A through J. So that is.
Well, I, so I got a question, which is, I thought we had discussed. Um. But this would not only be in the salvo. Because one of our issues. It was that someone that is not. Changing their land development, but changing a light bulb or re-angling their light bulb wasn't. You know, they could do that because it's not a land development. Is that, do we address that in this ordinance?
Well, that, that I think is in the comments from the County Planning Commission.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, that is in the fourth comment that they did, that they have there.
I just ask because it's in sort of in keeping with with this, I'm very happy to not have it be for any residential. Um, as long as it's in the zoning that allows if someone chooses to put a giant light bulb that is. I'm contrary to what you should be having in terms of light bleeding on your neighbor's property, then it's okay, because I don't, I don't think it, there is no salad, there is no land development in a residential, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this would just be they wouldn't have to submit a plan, a formal plan, you know, they're, they'll have to adhere to the criteria.
Right.
You know, you couldn't put a big bright LED that spills over your neighbor's property over certain hookouts, but you wouldn't have to submit a plan, like, is that is your question, Mike?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the land development, but then we also need to make sure it's in zoning so that someone is not developing their property but changing a light bulb. You know, that they um are still. It's tough to to stick to those requirements, so they're not all of a sudden putting a spotlight that goes on their neighbor's bedroom window, even though they haven't done any building, right?
Hmm.
Right. I don't know how best to to do that, but. I assume there there's some reference material maybe in the dark sky or something else that.
Yeah, and I can also look at the map maybe and see based on what the board wants, I could maybe tailor some language.
Yeah, I mean, these three, those two, the first two are essentially.
Yeah.
The same type of thing, like obviously we don't need landscaping for, you know, someone that that's. Couple lights in the backyard or something like that, yeah.
John, you have any suggestion on this? No, I do agree with Matt's comments, though, um. You don't want. Everybody who's just tinkering around in their backyard having to submit a plan to the township.
Right.
On on a lighting.
Right. Right.
Well, it's similar to what we faced with Jay Morales in a different way, which is.
Well, similar to what we faced with Jay Morales in a different way, which is, you know, small properties. Um, what, what relief can we give? Um, if it's, if it's either residential or if it's something utterly ethnic pain, since it was residential. And you suggested a couple of the. Um, criteria, criteria for him. I think same thing is true here. What do you do with your little property? You, you don't want the light spilled, definitely not, but to make up a whole plan for this.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think one thing about lighting is if we're gonna have. Uh, a lighting officer, which we are, I mean, lighting is something that. You can go out there and check. I mean, we do have the ordinance requirements, so you can't have spillover. And if someone does suspect spillover.
Is it SALDO or zoning?
I forget where it is, but it's definitely there.
Yeah, I think it's currently in SALDO.
Yeah, that, that's my biggest.
And so if someone. Does something, even though they're not required to submit a plan and the neighbor complains, hey, there's spillover, well. That's something that's easily measured.
Correct.
I, I think.
That's different from stormwater or grading that once it's done, it's a problem.
Isn't that in zoning now?
I can't remember whether it's in zoning or SALDO, but it's definitely there because we check it all the time for all the land development projects.
I think that's more, it's more related to large commercial, like massive light going in. Where they've now invested, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars and then you go back and you say. Well, I mean, you could still do it, saying that's against our zoning ordinance, but um. They're gonna be more upset if they weren't told beforehand, although, you know, it's in our ordinance, so.
Well, I think that's the difference between your, your general powers and like, what do you see when it's, when it's incoming, like how do we enforce? On an issue that, that, you know, exists after the fact. So I think that's something to look at and that's basically what Eric Koopman wrote in his uh review. I guess like the only other thing on here about the, the, the training by the designated LCO, I think we need to. Maybe just add man, but what formal training he has in it and what, what we, you know, the threshold that we think makes sense.
I mean, if you read the plan submission requirements, it says lighting plan shall be submitted for township review and approval for all subdivision. And land development, which we currently require now. Change of, change of use, I think it's important, not, not just because of spillover. But if you have a use that is. Uh, I don't know, predominantly used during the day and not much night and then. A new owner comes in and he changes the use. And now you have parking lots for people who are coming and going at night, well, then it's gotta be lighted better. Than what it maybe currently is. So again, you need a lighting plan for that. Variants, maybe not so much. Uh, conditional, I would say conditional use, yes. Uh, variance, maybe not so much, the zoning permit, probably not so much, Matt can handle that. Special exception, probably yes, because usually when you have those. That's where lighting could be an issue that you want, you wanna know about. So I think it'd be eliminated. The variance in the zoning permit and let that be under Matt's purview to exercise his judgment. I, I think it would be okay.
Correct.
Right, makes a lot of sense to me. And the other comments are that they're, you know. That this is generally consistent with uh other municipalities within the county and that's pretty encouraged. Um, same thing with the definitions on outdoor lighting and they liked the inclusion of illustrations. The only other, you know, major thing was that such standards are typically included in SALDO and then references. Are supposed to be like inserted into both zoning and SALDO, we're supposed to, we're encouraged to discuss the appropriateness of controlling lighting. Through a separate regulatory ordinance. But I think that's like the key legal question, otherwise the rest of it's probably.
Yeah, this goes to the same question from the wars. We were asking about signage, it's the exact same question on signage. I am concerned that. Taking it out of zoning in SALDO because it's easier to theoretically enforce. Opens us up to a, a legal challenge because we're talking about land use and land use belongs in zoning. That's why it was created, that's what, why the MPC is, or the planning commissions exist, that's what. Now, the state has given us authority to oversee.
But land use is anything, signage, as you said, land use, lighting, land use. Uh, parking, land use, no parking, land use, and everything can be pigeonholed to land use. But you're right, it could be argued that this is de facto zoning as it's called. And it should be under the zoning ordinance as opposed to the standalone ordinance. Certainly, it's always better to err inside of caution.
Because then you get, I mean, just gonna walk through.
The yin and that yang, though, is it takes longer to enforce.
Correct. But the, the idea of being, being in zoning, you have to, it takes longer to adopt the ordinance as well. And that's where they can come through and say, oh, they didn't give thirty days or whatever it is that's required. So the, the ordinance is, should be thrown away. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, it's a legal question.
Yeah, the, the, it's a little longer to have to adopt the zoning ordinance, but it's no magic.
No, I know that, I'm just saying that would be the argument of.
But if you give it to the planning commission to review, if you give it to the Monroe County Planning Commission to review. If you advertise once a week for two successive weeks, not more than thirteen or less than seven days.
And that argument is a moot point.
The, the argument goes down, down the tube. If the other, the reverse of that is do you want it in zoning to be safe? But then, you know, you have the, the, the process of that, you know, you have to then, if someone is in violation, you gotta cite them. Then there's a zoning hearing and then we have, you know, all of that, that additional baggage with, with a zoning issue.
Well, that's why I think we need to consider in the context of what we're trying to control for nuisances. And then have more modern lighting standards generally for new development, like that is clearly like a SALDO applicable argument. But I think when we're controlling for nuisances, you know, having, you know, your light that spills over is definitely code enforcement and more about.
You have to have it out of SALDO if you're gonna do it.
So, so that's what I.
Only deals with new developments.
And, and that's what I'm saying, like, do we need to just essentially have it in both so that we can pick the necessary?
Well, i- i- if, if in fact it appears that in the, the development process that this needs to be addressed. Then it should be in the SALDO and of course, if it's going to be addressed just generally, then it should be in your zoning or standalone.
Well, can you not, would you not be allowed to say, all right, let's put this in SALDO. Where it's been recommended by the Monroe County Planning Commission that perhaps it belongs. And then you create a separate code. Ordinance that references your SALDO and says if you are in violation of this beating on your neighbor's property, whatever, then.
You can do a, an ordinance that refers to another ordinance, there's nothing wrong with that. Those, those provisions in this ordinance are gonna apply here. You can do that. But you need a separate ordinance to do that because the SALDO will only apply to new development and to new. Uh, mo- mo- new projects, old projects that might have old lighting issues, et cetera, they won't be subject to a SALDO.
Right. Having the simplicity, we have to have it both.
Yeah, standard one, it's something we, just for enforcement, because having been through the uh. The, the problems of enforcing anything under the zoning code twenty seven is, it's, it's endless. It's just endless trying to get it in place. This is easy. If you're under another section like sixteen or something, it's like, okay, here's the citation, here's the fine, here's when you have to pay it. Get it fixed.
Yeah, I mean, it's all the same. This is gonna be time consuming, do we? You know, is this maybe a good project for the alternate solicitor to look at while everything else is ongoing? Does that make sense on, on?
If you wanna give it to the alternate solicitor, that's fine, I mean, I can review it too, but it's gotta go in rotation.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, if, if, if we won everything yesterday, and I don't mean to be cute about that, I mean it's sincerely, well then, I can't do everything yesterday. Try to, too many other things cooking in the township right now.
Right.
So if you think the alternate solicitor could review this and uh give you a comment and say it's all.
I think given the weight of the other ordinances, I think it probably makes sense here because. You're definitely gonna be weighing in on it, but you'll also be doing data center and looking at parks and uh. Obviously, the litigation too.
So we're looking at possibly two new ordinances.
I think it, it, it can be one piece, yeah, I think we want one piece of legislation in front of us. It just amends those both sections, so let's, Alex, let's have you make the, the. Chainers that, that we referenced and that John spoke of.
In reference to Matt, in reference to Matt and the planning commission.
Yeah, and then we will send that, you can send that to Bobby Kidwell, our alternate. But that's.
In reference, Bobby Kidwell referencing number four of the county and heard this discussion that you.
We should give them the whole, the whole package, yeah, the whole package.
Understood.
All right.
All right, public comment? I have a brief sword to fall on. Um, it was brought to my attention, thank you, Alex. The agenda in front of everybody and on the website is formatted slightly different than the agenda in front of the board of supervisors. Which is why Joanne was confused, so I apologize for that. Um, the agenda that's on the website. Um, has the Marshall's false bid and the hardship contract within the consent agenda. As Jacob stated, when he read off the consent agenda, it was only the three items, the resignation, appointing an alternate solicitor, having cable friend. Cable franchise discussion, um, awarding the contracts were obviously separate items. I apologize, that was a formatting error on my part, I'm sorry.
All good, didn't change the content, just.
That, that is correct, the content is all of this, is all the same.
Anyone? Brett?
First of all, I want to thank Julia for persevering with you, after you drive through line signage. To the conclusion, is really appreciated, thank you, Julia. And second, I have a question, if I may, regarding stormwater runoff management. Um, if, now I'm thinking of a specific proposal before you guys, but I'll speak generally. I want, if I wanna buy a piece of property that has existing runoff issues. And I wanna develop on that property. In order to get, where do you guys stand on or where does our law stand on? Do I have to mitigate all the water, including the waters coming in when I bought the property? Or do I, do I have, do I have to mitigate it aggregate in the aggregate? Or if I put three houses, can I just mitigate the stormwater runoff from those three houses? Is, does this make sense yet? John, what's your thing about that?
I didn't, no, I don't believe you have to.
Okay, good.
Uh, well. There's two, I, there's two, there's two answers to that in my. Experience, let me put it that way. The law require, we, water that's running through your property, let's say it comes from uphill. You've got, you've got a property in the middle, property above, there's a property down below. Water that starts up above, runs through your property and discharges down below. That is what is known as in the stormwater management lexicon, has bypass stormwater. And if you really by law don't have to do. Anything with that, you could, in theory, put it up, I take it through your property and let it go on its merry way. Um. But you would only have to account for those three properties that you're saying, those three houses that you're developing on your property. And make sure that that doesn't increase the run. Now, what I see happening on a practical basis. And it's, you know, it would involve more than three houses, but if you've got a big subdivision that's coming in with fifty houses. Uh, and the township is aware of some runoff problems, you know. What usually occurs is you have a conversation with the developer. And ask him to mitigate that, a lot of times they will, and if they get resistance. To your requests. Almost every development needs some sort of relief. Realistically, in terms of waivers and something like that, and the township can hold the line and say, no. We're not gonna give any waivers, you know, you don't wanna work with us, we're not gonna work with you. So that is the practical way of how you sometimes can solve those problems. But getting back to your initial question, in, in just the sterile world. Uh, bypass runoff does not have to be mitigated.
Anyone else? All right, hold on, they're gonna add and then Tim.
Bushkill Emergency would like to thank the township for helping us with an LSA grant uh for a hundred thousand dollars. It enabled us to buy three power stretchers. Now, hundred thousand dollars seems like a lot of money for a stretcher, these things cost over sixty thousand dollars a piece. So it didn't buy three, it wanted to get a loan to purchase three for three trucks that we need them in. Uh, it's a big benefit to the paramedics that have to lift patients into the ambulance. And it's not unheard of these days for a patient to weigh over three hundred pounds, so. It's a big help in getting them into the, into the truck, so. Good, thank you and appreciate it every, every bit of it, thank you.
Thank you, happy to help. All right, Tim?
This is for, uh, for Julia. Um, has your zoning officer been able to determine? Um, what the wellness center, the water guard wellness center is, in terms of being in or not?
Tim, I'm really sorry, I don't remember. Um, uh, I think he issued something, but I don't recall. If you're okay, uh, I'll touch base with him and follow up because it's, it's flown from my line, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that was from, probably you, six weeks ago or something.
Yeah, um, I, I remember after the discussion with Lance and David were here, uh, he was researching it. He gave me back all of the, the, the pile of, of stuff that I gave him, so I do believe he has issued something.
Okay.
I, I don't remember, I'm sorry, I'll email you.
All right, there wasn't, I don't believe there was a notice of violation because he's been sharing those.
No, the, it, Tim is referencing the determination of whether or not.
Yeah, correct, I just said there was no, no violation.
Under, yeah, our definitions.
That, that will determine whether they can build that recreation, et cetera.
It would determine whether they can build it in the location as proposed.
Right.
Uh, one. One determined, one use versus another requires a different setback from the property.
But also, the other use is not allowed. And that, they are right, they had a conditional use and did not, did not get it, so. Um, but we did determine that we could not get the tax information that we wanted. We tried to do that and were denied, yeah.
We, we do know that based on public court filings, it is under separate investigation that, that we're not privy to.
Okay.
But I think that's different than the use itself.
Is this public comment? Yes, okay. Um. Um, Zach Kaptowski, one oh nine, Public House Court. Uh, I just want you guys to, uh, first off, congratulations on your newly elected roles, congrats. Um, and getting reelected. I want you guys to reconsider, uh, the new township constable, um. Plain, plain and simple, he shot my pet, shot and killed my pet because he felt threatened because he was drunk one night. One night, he was out drunk by our dumpsters and shot and killed my goat because he felt threatened. This goat is about forty pounds at most, about no more than knee high, it's a Nigerian dwarf goat. Has no horns, has no, has one set of teeth, the friendliest goat. This goat goes to schools and does meets and greets and stuff with children. This guy was drunk one night outside of the dumpsters at Mountain Manor. And the goats live in an encaged, like a closure behind the dumpsters. One of the goats was out, everyone knows the goats are there, Marlon Brewster pulled out his gun and shot my goat. He shot my goat. It took me two weeks to figure out what happened to goat, my goat, and who did it, he came and admitted it to me. I went to the police, the state police, and nothing has been done. I went to the state police, I went to the DA, I went back to the state police, I went back to the DA, I went back to the state police. And you know what they told me? You're shit out of luck. You're shit out of luck, so I can go on any farm to anyone in this area and I can shoot someone's goat because it scared me.
Oh.
Uh, no, 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 this is what is being shown because the DA hasn't been doing anything about it. I have to go far, I have to go as far as filing a private. I have to go as far as filing a private criminal complaint.
Correct.
Followed by, followed by a personal lawsuit. For someone blatantly, obviously drunk, shooting my goat, and now he's an elected official in this township. Who is going to be put in charge of going around knocking on doors with a gun, he's with a gun, if he's scared of a goat, if he's scared of a tiny goat. He's gonna shoot a person.
Just, just to be clear, if only the primaries event and the general election is in November, okay.
Well, either way, just, just note, just note then, Marlin Brewster, the guy that is the only one who is up running for constable. Is gonna get the spot, he shot and killed my goat, he's a real piece of shit. Plain and simple.
So he's not our cop, is it?
Oh, I mean, it doesn't matter if anyone's running, he's gonna get it, he's not, there's no one else running.
Why?
Constable currently, so. And he is the only person on.
Oh, the only person running is the guy who obviously is mentally unstable enough to carry around a gun because he's scared of a goat. Why are you shooting goats at eleven thirty at night at the dumpsters? Cuz you, other, other than you're drunk and fighting with your wife, this guy has so many priors that you would be absolutely insane. Absolutely nuts to put this guy in any position of power and let him go around and knock on doors. And you, you're telling him, he's gonna knock on my door and tell me I'm doing something wrong, and 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 he, and he's scared of a goat, he's gonna shoot me, he's gonna shoot me. And and I think, obviously, PA State troopers doing nothing, they wanna do something, their hands are tied because. It's up to the district attorney to push, they keep pushing, they keep pushing, they keep pushing, I keep going, I fill out the paperwork and it just takes, it's. Well, obviously, as you know, the government works slow as shit, and I fill out the paperwork and what it's gonna be, by the time anything gets done, it's gonna be. Two years from now, it's already been, it's already been a month of me trying to fight to get something done, something, anything, something, something. This guy discharged a firearm in the middle of a crowded community, a crowded community, there is an apartment complex. Full of forty hu- forty homes right here, and then another thirty homes here, and then a clubhouse, and then a shop, and then other animals, and then, yeah, there's a public area that people can be in. Not a public area, but a private area in Mountain Manor community, and this guy's discharging a firearm and shooting my pet, like. Nothing can be done, they say, because it's agriculture, I called the FFA, I've called everyone trying to do something, and no one seems to wanna do anything. And you're gonna put this guy in a position of power, just, I just want you guys to consider, this guy's a fucking nutcase.
Okay.
To be clear. We heard you, we appreciate that, and I'm sorry to take you there, we're not the ones putting.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I know, I know, I know, but you guys are the supervisors, and you do supervise the things that happen in the township, so I want you to do your best. At supervising this nut job from not doing what he's elected to do, because he's going to, and essentially, he's going to be elected. Because there's no one else running, he's going to be elected to shoot someone, so just know that if you guys don't do anything, that that also falls back on you guys, cuz you now know about it. And it's noted, so that falls back on you guys when someone dies from that nutcase, thank you.
Thanks for your comment, anyone else? Would you motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Members of the.
I'm second.